Excuse me, my second, 2011, and we're convening the meeting of the Advanced Organic Commissioners, so please join me as I introduce.
Let the regents of the flag in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, clear of all.
Please join in a moment of silence as we think about our servicemen, both the ones in the past and the ones that are still serving. Thank you very much. The first part of our meeting is, we usually look for public comment, is there any public comment? Here in none, we have a meeting with Tim Fryery, who I see here, Mr. Tim, you want to join us up here?
Sure. Do I sit up here?
Yes.
It's the next you.
Sure. Come on up here.
Well, Tim, if you sit over there, you'd be right here.
Yeah, actually, the camera can see you and us a little bit because you're sitting there. That's right.
You want to use your best side, right?
And you certainly want everyone the next to you.
Yeah, everybody you see.
Bill, do you want to come up with like we do?
Tim, welcome, and why don't you identify yourself for people watching?
Right, my name's Tim Fryery, and I manage a county farm up there, under Cape Cod Organic Farm. I came to the meeting today just to, you know, kind of give you a state of what's going on up there, and what we've accomplished, and what we want to go forward with, and so forth. Let me start by saying that, you know, we've done quite a bit of progression up there, and it looks pretty good. The past year's been good, the first year was a little tough with the weather. This year, we did very well, as, you know, for the most part. It was a little dry, so you get the other side of that.
Welcome to farming.
Yeah, welcome to farming. But we did, we've garnished some grant money, and we did pretty well with it. We put in a compost bin, which we got funds from NRCS, and that's all.
Could you say what NRCS is, please?
National Resource and Conservation Service.
Okay, all right.
And it's a USDA.
Grant program?
Yeah, it's a USDA organization. They're located over on Communications Way. But we put in this new pad, and I do have a figure here, it cost, we got a grant for $54,795 to put it in, and it is installed, and it is being utilized.
Pen for what?
Pardon?
A pen for what?
No, it's a contact.
Compost bin.
Yeah. Basically, what you have is these blocks, they're four-foot-long blocks, about three and a half, and they're stacked on, double-stacked on each other. And there's a stone process, stone base on it, so that you can work off that. It was designed by an engineer over there.
Now, does it have some sort of aerator or mechanical turning?
No, we do all that by fire.
Okay.
And that was something that, you know, it was good, because the one we were going to put in, those shot money, I think we were going to put it in for $5,000, that was just with stone and stuff. This is really, this is, it'll last probably sixty, seventy years, just the way it is.
What's the home type of, these composters usually are fifty-five-gallon drum with a brine?
Right, yeah. These have large wings. Can I say, it's in the neighborhood of about a third of an acre.
What do you do for the relieving the heat that's developed, and if you have, like, stables and stacks of it?
No, well, we did, we're just basically, we turn it every three weeks with a firearm over it. It's amazing how hard it gets.
Oh, yeah.
You know, there was a big coyote, and we put that in there, and within two weeks, it was gone. So, I mean, it was gone. It breaks down stuff very quickly.
That's amazing.
It is amazing.
Perhaps you should tell people, you know, you're making this compost, you know, essentially, you're combining vegetable, mineral, uh, vensoral, and animal waste, and what happens to it?
Well, what we're doing, we took in a lot of grass clippings and leaf litter this year. You know, we have our own chicken manure, we're trying to get in some horse manure, too, to kind of balance things out.
Horse manure has to age, so.
Not when it's getting composted.
Okay.
It'll break down quickly. And we wanted to do that for our organic fields and stuff, I mean, that's the main use for this, is for our own use. Actually, we wouldn't mind some of it if we could make enough of it. But I, in foreseeable future, I'm not quite sure if that's going to work.
Well, I would suspect it's a much higher quality than the leaf mold you get from the land.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's done much more efficiently, too.
What else is going on?
What else is going on? Well, we did a couple of things that were, we finished off a hen house down there, and we put in some water down there. The pipes that went down there, originally were galve pipes, we had to, we ended up putting almost seven hundred feet of moly in, from the county's house up there, all the way down to the chicken house. We found that it was, there was a series of cracks and breaks, and so we had to turn the water on.
Well, what usually happens with zinc lining, is zinc picks up.
I mean, I thought it might be helpful if we heard your whole presentation first, and then maybe we ask questions?
Okay.
Because we can get sidetracked a bit here.
Okay. Okay, we'll go back to that. Basically, the chickens, we put in about a forty-seven-hundred-square-foot pen for them to walk around outside. And we actually, we put in, we've got five hundred laying hens, though. They're producing about twenty-seven dozen eggs a day at the moment. It's all certified organic. We did, we did something in the summertime, the organic certifications wanted them out on the pasture, which is, we worked something out where we can put in a bigger pen, and we can just move them within the pen, but they had them out, we had them out on pasture, which was a trip. We'll never do that again.
Did you ever escape?
Well, I don't know about escaping, but it was sure a pain catching them.
Yeah, I bet.
You know, we had electric pets.
You need a sheepdog.
I don't know what we need.
Free range chickens?
Free range chickens.
Free range chickens. So anyways, the coop's going well, we put in a, we've got the egg house down there, there was a small egg house, and we started to revamp it, we got water, we had water down to it, there was initially water there, and when we turned it on, it just kept breaking. We just were posed in the galvanized pipes, so what we did, we rented a backhoe, we just trenched it, all the way up to the house, put it in place, and it works well now. We got a hot water heater, and then we got a heater, so. So that's going well, and we're, we do them, recycle, we'll probably recycle. We've got them on a rotation, so we'll get three hundred new chickens to spring, actually, in two weeks. By July, they'll go back into the pen, and the old ones will go, basically, to the foreign community. They like the chickens. They're a little bit tough, but they like to dice them up in that way.
To market.
So you don't do chickens for meat there?
No.
You sell them?
Yeah, I don't want to do chickens for meat, that's a little bit too much work. We did raise turkeys this year, we had a, brought in a hundred, I think we ended up with forty-five after the caylins and fishy cats got here.
So we started with a hundred, and you got to forty-five, so that's a pretty hefty loss, yeah?
Yeah, it was a hefty loss, but it was learning.
And did you sell them live, or did somebody, you got somebody come in?
No, we had to sell them live, in other words, people bought them.
From a chick?
Well, they basically bought them before we slaughtered.
Yeah.
So that we could have them certified organic.
Yeah.
That's the only way you can do that, because once they go to a process plan. Once they touch other things in the process plan, then if it's not organic, you can't certify it, so that you don't do that.
Were slaughtering them there?
No, we didn't slaughter them there, they went up to Dan Beston's in Bridgewater. Let's see, greenhouses, oh.
No, go ahead.
Sorry, go. The greenhouses worked out pretty well. We're still trying to get, we got some grant money for them, too, for some new fans and new covering. We got a covering going over for, to cut down on the light inside, and it takes away from, you know, how much the fans are used, and electricity issues, and stuff like that. But we got a grant for, I think it was twenty-five thousand, twenty-five hundred from NRCS again, and there's some matching funds that we applied for with Berkshire. Anyways, there's some matching funds there. We do have a solar phot系 system going in, probably within the next six weeks up there. Again, that's a, we got some grant money for it. The system itself, I think, costs seventy-six thousand dollars for the installation. We've garnished money from Mass Bottom of Agriculture, we got some tax credits from US Treasury, we got money from NRCS, we got money from Mass Energy.
CDC.
CDC. And we ended up, we've got about fourteen hundred dollars coming out, fourteen thousand dollars coming out of our pocket to pay for that.
Tim, who files your grants for you, who prepares them?
I've gone through several people. One was NRCS helped, and then we approached Katula Solar to do some of the grant writing for us, so that, they're the ones that are installing. And then you find out where various things are, and you apply for them. You know, you sit down with somebody, and they help you with these grants, so.
May I ask, does the Cape Light Compact help in any of that?
Yes.
They're part of that?
Yes, they came down, did an energy audit, and we've got some stuff to implement with them, too. And that was part of the fans, being, you know, bigger fans, and the screen, and stuff like that. Also, they, we were supposed to put in some insulation, but haven't got to that yet. And the greenhouse is four feet up, and it helps, you know, keep the wind blowing in the area.
And you, you're under a lease, so your lease is, what, three years that we signed?
Three years.
And you're about a year and a half into it?
We're into the third year. I was actually just talking about.
Are we in the third year?
It's February 2012, okay.
So you've gotten a lot done.
Gotten a lot done.
You've gone through two seasons.
Right.
I'm sure you're headed to the future.
Can I jump in, Tim, would you mind? Because I also was going to mention, I'm glad Sheila brought it up, because this is, I have the lease pre-ruined, and we just so happen to have to look at this, and it's a good thing we did, because we are a week into the third year. So, then it says, as Bill just mentioned, it's February 24th, 2012. "The parties may enter into an agreement to renew the contract at the sole discretion of the county commissioners for a total term of not more than ten years as set forth in the request for proposals. Such agreement must be in writing and sent to by all parties." And I think, maybe to start that, because you know how time flies, and you're going to get pretty busy pretty quick. If, with commissioner's permission, maybe I suggest you just write us a letter saying you are interested in doing that, and then we can take that up at kind of a future meeting. Because I don't want to just let this go, I don't think you know either, you don't want to go too long.
Yeah, that was one of the reasons why I came here today, because, you know, at this point, you know, we're starting to put our own money into it, you know, it's, you know, which you got to do for a business. I mean, it's like, and it's like, I don't know how much, you know, I want to put into it if I'm not sure.
That's exactly, I don't blame you, exactly. I thought there was a, we had an understanding that you would continue, you know, once, once it was determined that you were making a success of it, and.
Well, I think it hinged on a couple of things, I think one of them that was in agreement, and also that we were growing some perennial crops in there, which we are, we've got blueberries growing in there, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so, if I can ask, so, your letter, are you encouraging Tim to say in his letter that not only is he interested in renewing, but if he wanted to extend that period of time? Because it said no more than ten years.
Not the ten.
We did three-year contracts, so you might be, you know, think, plotting your future, you might want to think about the time you would want to put, you know, just to make you feel secure.
I certainly wouldn't suggest that Tim asked for one year. I would suggest, you know, in my mind, I would ask for the ten.
Yes.
You know, speaking for myself, all the feedback that I've gotten has been nothing but positive. I thought for sure Sheila was going to say about the Christmas tree.
Right. I was a patron of this Christmas.
Somebody else, maybe Maggie mentioned what a beautiful Christmas tree she got, too, so.
The trees were fabulous, I mean.
All the feedback I've gotten has been nothing but positive.
And they brought a lot of little gifts there, you know, they had nice little flower arrangements that people had made, and it was just really nice to be able to have something a little different to bring to people's houses.
Bill, you have some of the most unusual and delicious potatoes that I've ever had.
Yeah.
Your eggs are absolutely amazing. Everybody that we've, you know, we've given some to people, they've, you know, they go crazy over it. So I think it's a wonderful use of the farm facility, you know, it really hadn't been used as it was intended for a long, long time.
For a long time.
Like, we've brought it back to kind of what it was intended to be, even beyond that, as an organic farm, so.
Yeah. There's still stuff that needs to be done, I mean, there's just, you know, we've got more preparation of the soil and stuff, soil was depleted, but, you know, we have started bringing that back with crop rotations, and, I mean, it's really, we're doing a good job with that practice system now, and we have a good act practice.
Do you ever grow patty pans?
We do.
You do?
Yep.
Grow what?
Patty coats. It's a form of squash.
Oh, patty, oh, yeah, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Because I had some one time, actually, Akunamasa, they had them as part of their entree, the aside, and I'd never had them before in my life, and I couldn't find them anywhere. So I'm happy to know. Are they a fall, mostly a fall vegetable?
No, they're July, August.
July, August?
Those are the flat ones, the flat ones?
Yeah.
Imagine where some of the, you know, some of your customers that you, some of the commercial customers that you have, that you sell the eggs through, so people could, you know, access some of these sides coming to the farm.
Yeah, we, let's see, where do we do, well, right now, we sell to Pandevi on our eggs. I'm trying to think where else, there's another restaurant, Daily Paper.
I know, they think they feature it at the Daily Paper.
Yeah, and then, we're really not, we're not selling them to the stores and stuff, we sell them out of the Cape. It's a problem, I don't want to give, I don't want to give people stuff that they can't continue with over the years, over the whole year, the course of year, so what we've been doing, instead, we donate a lot of eggs to Salvation Army, to Calvary, perhaps, we do about fifty of them, fifty dozen a week.
You know, the thing we're trying to encourage, you know, is this, and of course, you're, you know, you're a host of child for, you know, for that, so, I want to make sure that people, if they, you know, in order to get the eggs and the potatoes and the flowers, and some of the vegetables and season, you also offer a deal, I think, as far as people who buy in at the beginning of the year. Maybe you should, you should tell folks about that.
Yeah, well, we do, we do do a CSA, which starts in June.
CSA is?
Community-Sponsored Egg, and it's basically, you're buying to a membership, and you get a certain amount of vegetables, and it works out to be about twenty-five to thirty-five dollars in between there, a week for twenty-two weeks. It's a good deal.
Are you subscribed, fully subscribed, or if people are interested, how would they?
We've got about fifty more spots to fill, we want to keep it at about a hundred.
And if somebody wanted to sign up for that, how would they do that?
They would just, they could contact our website, Cape Cod Organic Farm.
Dot org?
Yep.
Cape Cod Organic Farm.
Dot org. Yep. And we do have a website, and we're on Facebook, and.
I should do retail, right, you're open to the public?
Open to the public, it's good, last year was better than the first year, I mean, I don't think people really knew we were there, last year was.
We fixed the road, too.
Yeah.
Think that. It was a little better, yeah.
A little bit, took the bumps out, and I, I'm assuming that the road's going to be redone this year, I think.
Hopefully.
I don't know, maybe.
We had some money, John Blaisdell, our facility, she's kind of back and forth, we did some better stone on it last time, because we had some money. We're kind of talking about paving it, you know, which would be the ultimate fix, and.
Paving would be the ultimate fix, but stone looks fine, too.
Yeah.
It's permeability and stuff like that.
Do you sell any of your products to farmers' markets, or only to people who come?
No, we do, we do Arleens, and I think what we're going to try to do is Harwich this year, as farmers' market, someone contacted me about debtors' board, too.
Well, I raised that only because the other day, as you know, I live in Farnham, and there is a farmers' market there in the summer, every Thursday, all summer long. And it's been very successful, and it continues to be more successful, and I know they get their produce from farmers, you know, around. And this year, we learned that some of the landscape companies, or the nurseries, have also been selling fresh produce that they've obtained from the farmers. And because they sell it in their establishment, they have no overhead, because they're already paying overhead to sell their own products. And so now the farmers' market, which usually has to pay for the use of the public land, you know, like a park, or whatever it is, to sell their goods, are saying, wow, now we're a competition with the, with the business community that's also selling fresh produce. And now our overhead, we have overhead and they don't, so they're selling them at a lower price, and now we have to lower our prices. But I thought, in a way, that's good, not that they have to pay more, and I think, I think towns have to look at whatever they're charging the farmers' markets to use, to use the town-owned land. But to have it spread out more is a good thing, but I think we have to level the playing field in some way, too. Wouldn't you agree?
Well, I would, yeah, I think that it's tough, dealing with, different towns have different rules.
Right.
That's the problem, and I do sit on the agriculture board for the town of Barnstable, and we're trying to coordinate with them to get, you know, one set of rules that will cover all the markets, and then, just for the town of Barnstable. There's been some discrepancies, and it's tough, you know, you deal with a lot of boards, and everybody's.
Everybody does it differently.
So if you could streamline that, and it'd be much better, and that's what we're trying to do.
If I, if I may, you know, I had been talking to Mark, and I think even Bill a little bit, like, you know, gee, if we had that building across the street, the General Store, you know, we could put offices up on top and then create a market, you know, you lease it out to someone to do a market, and you could have a whole section of Buy Fresh, Buy Local, and, yeah, of course, you know, we listen, you know, I put it out there, but anyway, I just thought it was a great thing, and you could, because Wellfleet needed a, you know, our market was desolated, and a guy came and leased the market, and is now, it's like the center of the town. And you can even do a section of it that would just be for farmers, if they wanted to, like, rent a little bit of space. But have you thought of doing something like that at the farm, like, one day a week? Maybe hosting the farmers' market at your establishment to bring more people in and give you, it would help people know where you are on a daily basis, and draw the public in for.
Well, I really haven't thought of that, but it is a good idea to, you know, generate business and to help the other farmers, and I think that's, my main thing down here is that we do keep it local, and we do have the local farmers, you know, the Cape Cod farmers.
Right, exactly.
Represented. The only market down here, and there's twenty-nine vendors in Arleens, and it's all Cape farmers.
Right, right, I've, we've seen each other down there, so, yeah.
Do you have the apple come from Rhode Island, don't they?
Um, maybe, yeah, maybe, yeah, there are a couple of products, there's corn.
Well, there aren't too many apple orchards on the Cape, are there?
No, but we put one in last year.
Oh, there's a?
Yeah, not in the county farm, but on, there's some other, at least.
So where are most of the farmers' markets in the towns? Are they?
Let's see, Farnham has one.
And they have to pay for the use of the park that they have? And I'm wondering if that's the same in other towns as well? Or do they get?
It depends if it's privately owned property, or, most of the towns are pretty, they generally let you do it. I mean, you have to get farmers' market insurance, which is readily built.
At Arleens, I think that Cape Cod Five was lending in the park, and then they moved them over behind Staples, is what it was all about. And Harwich, it's, you know, it's a Brooks Academy, and that's town land, you get Wi-Fi there, too.
Yeah.
And you've got.
That's a great one, Harwich is a really good market.
You know, then you could charge a small fee, I mean, you could, you could do it, whatever, you know, you want to, if you wanted to, if you wanted to encourage that, and you could gauge it so that it was, you know, a friendly fee, and everyone's sort of benefiting there, and particularly you, because it would be bringing people's attention to the farm.
Yeah, we did a, the CSF was, was picking up there last year, and that's the Community-Sponsored Fisheries.
Right, right, and you can do the fish?
Yeah, and they.
Shellfish?
They got a great response, boy, they, I think they sold out in half a day.
Yeah, so I think things like that are great.
Yeah, and it helped us out a lot, I mean, brought a lot of business, because people pick up their fish, and then they pick up, you know, problems.
Okay, so if you identified one other, one other vendor, you know, one other venue for, you know, to supplement it, you know, you're not dealing with organizing a whole farmers' market, but basically featuring the thing, like the fish.
Right.
And perhaps, you know, you know, I don't know, nobody butchers meat around the Cape, I'm looking.
No, yeah, we do have pigs. We just bred one of our Berkshires the other day, and we're hoping to get into it. Again, that's going to be, the difference there, heritage breed pigs in your pasture, they go out on the grass, and it's different.
Pigs are smart.
Yeah, and they're, basically, they're pretty clean when they do, you know, you raise them the right way.
Raise them in slop.
Well, you can't do that.
They get wet to get, you know, to get cool, because, you know, like a dog, they don't, you know, they don't have any way of relieving the heat, you know, that's why they, you know, they get in the muck.
Yeah, we've got, actually, we've got three silos in their heritage, and one of them is, they're black pigs, and there's only three hundred breeding pairs of those in the country. So, I mean, and I think those will probably be just for stock, for people who want to get into breeding, the blacks, marsh mice. They're kind of, they've got bigger ears that go around their head.
Oh, yeah.
They're, they're different, they look very organic.
They're very good bacon?
Yeah. Well, hopefully, that's what I want to do, I want to get it so that we can get into some production with the pork, get it USDA-certified, to the place in Athol, and there's one up by Newberry Pork, and then sell them, it's cryogenically sealed, so.
My wife and I would be looking for the treat that comes from really fatty pork.
Oh, God.
You know, the old days, you remember that, oh, God, it's so good. But then, but now it's so lean, you know, you can see other white meat, it's almost like chicken.
You should see this meat, these Berkshires, the ones that, it's red, it's not pink meat, it's red meat.
Really?
Yeah, it's marbled, too. The, actually, the Berkshires, the Japanese, they took, and they called it Kaboko.
So it's Kobe beef and Kaboko pork, huh?
Kaboko pork, and they had, for years, it kind of grabbed all the Berkshire pigs, and they're coming back into breeding now, but there was a real shortage of them.
When would that be available, do you think?
It'll be available in October, October, November, so I'm looking forward to that.
Bill?
Just a note about the pig, Tim has one by the name of Dolores. She raises it at about six fifty, and the staff that we have at the, at the farm are, have sort of all adopted her. Last Monday, last Sunday night, the alarm went off at our office, so I got the call from the alarm company, and I drove out there at night and met the police, and the policeman got there before me, and he was out walking the farm with a flashlight, and Dolores likes to come out, when she, when we come out, she comes out to just greet everybody, and he was a little bit startled by that six hundred fifty pounder.
He didn't throw the gun, did he?
No. It's quite dark out there, and when the wind blows, sometimes the door rattles and the alarm goes off, so. No. It's quite dark out there. And when the wind blows, sometimes the door rattles and the alarm goes off, so I get the call and have to run out there. But it was funny because Dolores was out just wanting to say hi and startled the pork off.
They do have these gutter old noises. The pigs are, you know, vrrr. And it lets them scare the crap out of them.
It's 6:50, I guess.
Yeah.
It's because it wasn't charging before.
Yeah.
The good part about the Berkshires, they're known as the Labrador Reaches of the Pig World. They're really, they're gentle. I mean, as a pig and baby.
They're enthusiastic.
Dolores might die of old age and she keeps getting attached to them.
Well, she's a breeder, so, you know, it's tough getting attached to them. And she'll probably be a breeder, too.
That's why I'm not a farmer. All my animals would die of old age.
Well, in any case, is there anything else you wanted to call us on?
Yeah.
Uh, the only other thing is we're putting irrigation, we're putting a new irrigation system. And again, we get funding from NRCS. We've actually...
Where's the water coming from?
It's the town water. And I'm trying to think now. By the end of this coming year, we've had $150,000 worth of grant money put back into the farm, which is...
That's great.
Yeah, which is pretty substantial.
Yes.
So with all those improvements, you want to, we want to make sure that we work together going forward on the lease.
Right.
Absolutely.
Right. And there's still, there's other things that I want to do there. And one of the things that we've got to address, and I don't know, I've talked to Bill about it, is we've got to do something with the barn. The barn's gonna get in disrepair soon and I don't know.
You want to replace it or...
No, we don't have to replace it. The siding was done wrong over the years. It wasn't done right. So it leaks. It comes right through. It should have been three inches, you know, it overlapped and stuff and they put it at full boards on it.
What about putting a skin on it?
I don't know. The roof leaks. There's some, there may be a beam or two that need to be replaced, but it's something that's got to be addressed. I don't have the money to fix it, I mean, per se, so it's like, either we gotta find some grant money or something's gotta be done because you're, it's a beautiful structure.
Okay, so you want to preserve it?
We want to preserve it. And I wanted to put that out. I don't know.
Well, maybe we should put a bug in the air, the historic, you're in a historic area, right?
Yeah, I don't know who would, I don't know where you would get money from. I don't know.
Find out whether the, do you see the Barnstable Village Historic Society might be interested in supporting it?
So how old is the barn? What year is it built?
It says 1876.
Well, actually, if the building is 50 years old, it can qualify for, you know, historic status.
I asked the Resource Development Office to keep an eye out for grants for repairing historic buildings.
What about the community preservation? Now, that, the CPC for the town of Barnstable. I don't know what, how they, but for historic preservation, 10% of the money has to go to historic preservation. So it might be possible to get on their list.
Right. You might raise that, you know, when you go to the farm meeting to find out whether they have any interest in putting forth a project to support a historic structure on a working farm in the town.
Sort of sounds like the first step, Tim, is to get an engineer or an architect or somebody out there to take a look and see, you know, if you wanted to kind of just get it so that it's watertight and not falling down.
That's...
And what is it gonna cost?
If I could make a suggestion, you have Sarah over at the commission, the historic consultant, you know, the...
Sarah Cordia.
Thank you, Cordia. I was gonna call Cordia and I knew it was wrong. It's Cordia. And she's, you know, she's very good at, you know, walking through a building and seeing, you know, where the mistakes are. And she could probably recommend someone that the, you know, that she's worked with in the past.
You're right. She can do the evaluation.
She could, you know, she'd at least walk and give you some information.
And give you something as far as the historical information with regard to the building structure, what, you know, what particular architectural details are identified as being, you know, appropriate for the time that it was constructed. And one of the things that, as a historic specialist, she's very concerned about maintaining the existence of particular craft from particular periods. You know, for example, if there's mortise and tenon and things like that in there and, you know, let's say there were pegs used instead of nails. And if the nails that we use, for example, were hand cut and from a particular period, all those things factor into the kind of decision when we get out to the historic nature of the building.
The important thing is that Sarah can be...
She'd just be a very interesting person to talk to and help.
And not only that, but she can also help guide you on the CPC funds, too, as well.
Yeah, that'd be good.
In working with Barnstable, because that's a great source of funding. And I don't know where they are in expending those funds, but a structure like this clearly would make the list, for sure.
And definitely, somebody, I think probably 20, 25 years ago, they put a lot of money into that structure, put beans in and I think they lifted...
I think it was right at the end of Jerry Bose's term or maybe the beginning of Jack Demellos when they got a grant to renovate the barn. So it's been that long.
It's town of Barnstable land, it's, isn't it?
What? No, it's kind of... It's under Town of Barnstable restriction, preservation restriction.
Agricultural.
Yeah.
So is the barn our barn or is it...
It's ours.
It's our barn. So, so I think, you know, can I make a motion that we just send Sarah a note that maybe she can have a conversation with Tim or...
Yeah, we'll work out where to go. Yeah, we'll figure out. I think it's gonna take more, Sarah's kind of on the historical side. It's gonna take an engineer and go up there.
Oh, absolutely.
Place a little party, you need to fix that bean, you know.
Well, what I'm saying, yeah, well, what I'm saying is she could recommend, you know, she's worked with a lot of those types of guys, so she might be able to...
We sort of, yeah, and, yeah.
Actually, a member of the Kate Carter Commission, Mark Harding.
Well, I'm thinking, we have some kind of under contract now, we're kind of Jim, so.
Oh, all right.
Well, maybe we could ask him to kind of look at this for a couple of bucks more.
Is Mark's one?
Okay.
Without having to go through a whole lot of...
I guess, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, because...
That's good.
Yeah, great. Bring the resources.
Then we'll, we know what we're talking about, whether it's 10,000 or 100,000.
Yeah, then we can go for it. Then we can...
Then we can kind of work from there.
See what we need to, if we can get some grant equity on it.
Yeah.
Well, did you have any else to talk about?
I think that's it. We're just, I think we've done some talking with the hook fishermen about them putting up a cutting station there. Just very tentative. And other than that, I think it'd be a win-win situation.
You must have plenty of fishes in the...
Well, we'd like to do it for the compost, you know.
Plus, Bill, do you want to kind of jump in and talk about how this would kind of, well, did the Buy Fresh, Buy Local?
No, well, sure. First of all, I just wanted to give credit where it's due. This is an asset of the county, this farm, and I'm glad we have it.
It's become an asset since it's been down there.
Excuse me?
It's become an asset since it's been down there.
It sure has. And Tim's done a great job of improving our asset through all these grants and through hard work and making it productive. And it's a buzz with people coming in, buying products. And Tim hasn't mentioned, but he supplies restaurants with products and farmers' markets and all. So it's been great for the county in general. But in terms of the Buy Fresh, Buy Local, Tim's on the board of Buy Fresh, Buy Local. And it's just what we're trying to do. As Bill said earlier, that's what it's all about. It's producing it locally. It's being either sold directly or indirectly through restaurants, but it helps benefit the restaurant. It's all good. And should it expand into more partnerships and collaboration with the Hook Fisherman's Association, there's another product that's local, that can be sold locally. Last year, I was a member of the, this Community Support Fisheries, and every Friday afternoon, us fall, we prepaid, we picked up our fish at the farm and we had a certain timeframe. We had to run over, pick up our fish. While we were there, if you needed potatoes or squash or onions to go with your fish for that night, it was right there. And this is what it's all about. So if we can expand on this...
Right, it could be Fish Day again.
Now you're talking. But based on what the hook fishermen have told us, they, it was a benefit to them, they, you know, it's another one of our native historic industries that needs support.
Boy, it sure does. And I really, I really hope it takes off.
It's great.
Well, hopefully, when they make the reappointment, that fellow Dempsey will replace the guy that's stepping down because of term limits, you know, Hook Fisheries Association. And that would be, that would be good for us and give us the, you know, an additional presence, you know, on the fisheries board. But, Tim, thank you very much for coming in.
Yeah, well, thank you and appreciate that.
I know that a month from now, we're not gonna see you at all.
No.
We're not to get you, Tim, the way, as soon as, you know, it doesn't have to be anything fancy, just in interest if you want to pursue longer-term arrangement. And that, we, assuming we work something out, we have maybe a little signing ceremony out there in early, late June or early July when you've got some stuff out.
Well, you should come in October and then we could do some pork.
Yeah. You'll definitely see me there.
Excellent. For that, I hope it's not Eleanor.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, good to see you.
Yes, you too. All right, keep up the good work.
After you.
Nice to see you.
Okay, good to see you.
Call you for the county plans.
Yeah, you should.
I will, and others.
See you, Bill.
We'll see you.
Bye, Bill.
We have a few minutes before. We're supposed to start the budget overview in case anybody's gonna show up. Does anybody have any questions on the summary of actions?
No, I read them over. I don't have any questions.
You have any questions, Sheila?
No, I'll move to the summary of actions.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move it in orderly fashion.
Yes, yes, we'll write down the...
Do you want to do reports?
No, we do need to kind of spruce this up because this has some specific stuff about year one and year three, so we just need to...
There is one other thing. We have to, I think that this provides that opportunity that it doesn't have to go out for a...
We talked about the lease agreement?
You talked about the lease. Yeah, it's clear that in the original RFP, we provided that we may extend the winning bidder up to 10 years.
Yeah, I want, I think that has to be clear so there's no...
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and that's perfectly fine. This was actually done out by Bob Troy. Bob, I thought it was Bob Troy. So it's good. Yeah, and everybody that I've talked to said, said Troy could do it.
You know, been down there several times, you know, over the season and all the stuff is all good.
Yeah.
Those eggs are amazing. It's the best, brings you back to, back in the day, you know. Did you ever try to go, go chickens for eggs?
No, but I, his stories bring me back. When I was a kid, my father, not at our house, but we raised turkeys one year. Because my father's grandfather was a turkey farmer. And one year, we raised pigs. And so you do get attached to them, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Turkey's not as good because they kind of lay in there. It's kind of stupid.
And they don't smell very good when they're in a big group.
No.
Every turkey farmer in Maryland.
But one of them was, when it was dressed, was like 32 pounds. We had that at Thanksgiving because that's almost like too big to handle.
It was huge, yeah.
You can't fit it in your oven.
Yeah.
But they're really, it's very different.
They're very different. It's, yes.
I would pick one up for Thanksgiving if it was warm. I'd have to put it in the bathtub under ice.
Yeah, I won't, because my father was the one who dressed them. I won't tell you about that.
I think they stay warmer than humans.
I don't think you want to.
Yeah, are we still on? We're not on.
I was on report. I was on report.
Of that one?
I'm sorry.
I wanted to give you your report, Mike.
If you would like, sure. Just a reminder that today at the assembly, at 3:15, they're doing the Chapter A Enabling Regulations for the DRI, Ordinance 9B12, as they're admitting. I believe this is the fees that they're looking at. The fees for the DRIs, the commissioned DRIs, we change the fees. And then the commission, the assemblies having the regular meeting at 4 o'clock.
Is that specifically for wind?
No, this is not the wind. It's just their general, overall fees. There's a whole list of the fees.
At 4 o'clock.
4 o'clock is the regular assembly meeting. Nothing out of the ordinary on the agenda.
Are they taking up any ordinances or anything like that?
Nothing out of the ordinary, no.
We haven't been requested to speak. Is there anything...
You're always on the agenda, but there's nothing out of the ordinary. And I wanted you to know that on March 25th, at 1 o'clock, at the Dick Bigus Community Room at the CAC Building in Hyannis, Senator Dan Wolf and Senate President Murray are having their annual budget form.
You can see.
I have, March 25th.
Yeah, I know that.
I think that's a prime, usually it's a prime. I'm asking you to approve the Barnstable Village Civic Association's use of the tiny complex parking area for the Touch a Truck event on Saturday, June 25th, this year, 2011, at 10 a.m.
This is a very good question.
Usually, I don't know if they're coordinating with the...
Fire trucks.
With the...
Kids.
They have all kinds of trucks. They have pickup, I mean, dump trucks against them. They usually have tried to coordinate it or they have the past couple of years with the park in the village event. I don't know what they're doing this year, but that's happened before. I did that for you. So you can get that off your plate. So, and then I wanted you, remember a while back, we had a bit of an issue with some of the rewards cards that some of our Verizon accounts were earning over at RDO. And so Darlene and I worked out a method where what she'll do is when she gets awards cards, we're gonna bring them to you and you're gonna approve their use. And she has three of them. She has one...
Do we draw lots for them?
No, she's gonna use them for the AmeriCorps kids, for the AmeriCorps young adults at the AmeriCorps program. So she has one for Fridays for $25 and two movie ones for $25 each. So I'm asking you to vote to approve the use for the AmeriCorps Kate Carter program.
So moved.
Second.
Sure. All of you favorite?
Yeah, I think so.
Aye.
Thank you. I think that's, I just wanted to remind you, you know about this one already. I've mentioned it before, but I'll mention it one last time. On Friday, March 18th, from noon to 2 o'clock at the Children's Cove, they're having their annual legislative launch in open house. So you should know about that. Unfortunately, I'm not that day. That's March 18th, Friday. It's all different if that's a...
At noon, yeah.
So that's all I have for today.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I was at the Children's Cove Board Meeting this morning and we did talk about that. And it does appear that Congressman Keating is going to be attending that legislative open house. So I'm sure if there's members of the press that would like to come and follow him, they would be more than welcome. And it would also be an education, you know, it would be, I think, good for people to know about Children's Cove and what it does and shed a little bit more light on that. And they are having, they're planning all of their different events in the future. They, in June, they have their golf tournament coming up, so people are getting very busy on that. And they are looking for some board members from the community. I am going to ask someone I know. But if there are people who are interested, have had any experience, personal or professionally in their work with sexual abuse, particularly with children, and they're interested in serving on that board, they could contact Children's Cove off of our website, BarnstableCounty.org, and inquire about that. And also, they're gearing up for their conference. They have a conference. This past year, they had it at the Cape Carter, which was a very well-liked venue. They had over 225 people attended that over two days. I did attend it for half a day. It was very emotional. It's very hard work. And they will be doing that again, and I believe it will be at the Children's Cove. And they're expecting close to three, I think they're gonna max out like at three, I mean, at 275, the max that Kate Carter can handle. So that's going very successfully for them. It is a big cost for them, but it's very educational and it brings all those networking connections together in that field. And we all know that we went to the Human Rights, where Linell received an award, as well as many other people, on Sunday at the Katuah Arts Center. And they are featuring a, an artist from Africa.
Sudan.
The Sudan, who is, has a statement to make about human rights. So that's a very interesting and beautiful exhibit. So it's running for another week or two and I encourage people to go there.
It's at the Katuah Arts Center.
And, you know, I'm sure there's many other things. I was to see Speaker DeLeo last week. When I left here, I had a meeting with the speaker... When I left here, I had a meeting with the speaker. He and I chatted at the MMA after I attended one of the workshops, which was called the MWR-A, 25 Years of Success. And I thought that was very interesting. So I went, and it was the panel of people who were then all in place when the Boston Harbor cleanup came to its head. And of course, they didn't apply for federal funding the year before, so the year that all of this hit the fan for them, there was no more federal funding, and they were left with the price tag. And of course, when people see the price tag, no one wants to do anything about it. So it was interesting because they referred to, so it was Speaker DeLeo, Phil Golden, who was the attorney that brought this all to CLF, Fred Lasky, who is the head of the MWR-A right now, another gentleman, Bob, I forget his name, but, and then another couple of people who, one was a community activist or a community member, maybe on one of the boards of selectmen. And Speaker DeLeo was also a selectman then. So they referred to him as Mr. Selectman throughout this entire panel, which kept hitting me, thinking, you know, this would be a very good person to speak to about this, and he could even speak to the boards of selectmen, you know, there's an identification he could make in the positions that they're in. Of course, there was no selectmen there, other than Paul McDonald. But anyway, it was very interesting. He reached out to me and said, you know, I presented our situation down there, there was much talk about the Cape, we're not on, it's not as though people don't realize we're here, they know our problem. It was very, very good, and he reached out and said, "If there's anything I can do in helping you and even helping the delegation." So I thought that was a great opportunity, I seized on it, and I brought Andy and Paul with me. And Sarah Peak joined in on that conversation, and I think she was very surprised at the depth of where we are. I mean, it's very good that this happened because the speaker definitely gets our situation.
What did you ask him for?
We didn't ask him for anything. What we asked him for is we wanted to tell him where we were and what our situation was.
What you got to learn.
In regards to dealing with the wastewater issue, where we told him about CLF, Andy and Paul have been meeting with CLF and EPA for hours upon hours in the last several weeks, so they had a lot to discuss on that. And just that somewhere in the future, we want him to know about where we are, and we may even call, we might have to call upon the legislature for some legislation to help us through something. Our funding is going to be needed. So he is, he was very gracious. He gave us more time than I thought we were going to be allowed. He was very knowledgeable on this subject, and I think he's going to be a great help with us, for us, with the delegation, because you can see he gets the depth of it. And although they are very aware of the problem, I don't think they really understand the severity, and it was, I think it was an eye-opener for Sarah to a certain degree. And so what we have, what we were talking about on the way out of there is that we would like to have a presentation done for the, call the entire delegation, and give them a presentation, Andy and Paul, let them know where we are, where we've been, where we are, and what's ahead of us, possibly, even with lawsuits. And so that they understand when we call upon them in need.
I think that's a good idea. Can you organize that?
Yes, yeah, I'll be happy to do that.
Yeah, because I think it's very important.
So I'll work and call on that, we'll get them all over the commission and ourselves, and we can have a nice conversation about this.
Wherever you have it, you know, I think it'd be, I think this would be a useful thing to do, because I certainly wouldn't want our legislative delegation not to be aware of where we are, and I think that's a very good thing.
Well, I would have them all here if we had that type of smart board, that sort of thing, so until we get our state-of-the-art upgrades.
It doesn't matter where it is, as long as we're there and do it.
I think I'll see if we can do that in the, in that office, and we can...
Do you think we should do it before the budget, you know, as House One gets put forward?
Well, I think anytime, I'm not sure if there's going to be much money, though, we can even, you know, try to make them aware of that need. But I do think the sooner the better, because, you know, even though some people were involved in helping us get SRF funding, I don't think the whole thing came together until that conversation. So it was very worthwhile. He's a very, very nice gentleman, and as they say, he was very gracious to us, and I think we will be, we have an ally there.
Well, thank you for doing that, and I'll look forward to you getting this other part organized, so we can get everybody together to do just that.
I will do that, and I'll get back to you.
Good.
And I think that's all I have to report on.
Okay.
Well, I attended the meeting at New Alkemee last Saturday, in fact. The representative of the United Nations was there, her name was Katerina Dalbaker, and she is assigned to the Water Committee, or Worldwide Water Issues. And she and her person with her, his name was Yooni Kim, they are traveling all over the world, everywhere, every country.
Yooni Kim, is she free?
Yeah, I would imagine she's free. And anyway, she really did not speak about what the UN is actually doing, other than the fact that it has been determined that water is a human right, and that every, every single person in the world needs to have, should have, by right, clean water, and that it should be affordable, and that there should not be adverse impacts on any person to receive clean water. Of course, we know in other countries that that's a huge issue. And then she opened it up for discussion, and not for discussion, but for testimony. And a lot of people, they got up and spoke, a lot of the people who are also involved in wastewater issues as well. And also, there's some, there's a couple who lives at New Alkemee. And everyone, almost everyone there talked about alternatives to wastewater cleanup, in terms of having clean water, and using the alternatives like they do at New Alkemee, with the compost toilets. In fact, they actually had a demonstration.
They have a previous model.
But a little learning experience, so you could go in and see one, and see exactly what it was like, which kind of interesting. So, following that, and when the, I had to leave a little bit early to go to the Human Rights Commission, so I didn't really quite stay until the very end. But then I wanted to mention that in the town of Falmouth, there's about 60 to 75% of the clean water in Falmouth comes from a surface water system, and we all know about the boil water waters that came about in Falmouth, and some other towns also have boil water issues. So it appears that the solution on the clean water side, in some instances, is this filtration plant. So Falmouth has an article on the law of $800,000 to do a study, to determine what type of filtration would work best at this particular plant at long term. But I think, on the other hand, you look at this and say, you can't separate water and wastewater, because if you build a filtration plant to handle 9 million gallons of water, which is, say, the average water use in a town over the course of a year, obviously, more usage is in the summer, and it's much less in the middle. But if you, if every single household were to install a compost toilet, or something else that eliminates the use of clean water to flush toilets, imagine how much less water you would use. We determined it might be 1.5 million gallons or more per year if households used alternative methods for disposing of waste, rather than the conventional method. So think of how much that would reduce the cost of the filtration plant, if you were not using that much clean water for purposes that you don't really need to use. So a lot of these questions are beginning to really surface, and they should, they are really statewide issues, they're not just for any particular town.
And if we approach this in the same way that we approach energy efficiency for electric use, we've seen dramatic decrease in the amount of energy, electric energy that's being used over the last several years because of the aggressive activities of the Kiko pump. Perhaps we need to institute a, something that goes into that for, you know, for water protection, because, you know, the issue is, we are standing on our water, we don't get water from a reservoir, and we, every time we flush the toilet, we're recharging the water, you know, the water table.
Right. So, I mean, it's really something to think of. When we start dealing with wastewater, we have to also think of water. You can't separate the two, because there's obviously a definite consideration. And I'm going to leave the other one, which is related to this, to last, because I wanted to mention that the MMR, all the commanders at the MMR made a presentation the other night, the Army Command, the Coast Guard, the Air Force, PAIPAS, and the commander of the base. And they talked about a lot of the activities that are going on at the base, which a lot are related to homeland security. On, also, the, this was on Tuesday, at 1:00, we had Open Cape, and Dan made a great presentation to the members of the chamber and the legislative delegation on Open Cape, which is moving along really, really well. Following that, there was a meeting with the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce and the delegation over at the Daniel Webster and Sandberg. And it's very clear that, and this, a lot of it had to do with tourism, with, as Sarah Peak is the chair now of the Tourism and Cultural Committee at the State House, and this whole issue of meal tax and motel, hotel motel, vacation rentals, timeshares, all of that. And how, in fact, the Cape Cod Chamber, because Dorothy Savory's...
Those were, what?
Those are mine. That Dorothy Savory's, who's going to be the new president of the Cape Cod Chamber, was talking about some research that they had done, and for every dollar that you put into tourism, the community gets $5 back. So that's something to really consider when the towns are struggling as to what to do with this hotel motel tax. Some have put it forward, some haven't, and the Cape Cod Selectmen's Association agreed, as you know, that they would work together to go forward with the legislative delegation to try to get that as part of the municipal relief package. And then following that was a, oh, wait, before I leave the MMR, the BRAC is the Base Realignment and Closure Committee, which gets formed every five years, will be back at Otis, I think, in a couple of years.
Five years ago, I hope.
Yeah, well, two years, it's three years, there's two more years to go. And they're working very hard to stay relevant, because they're so, I mean, the Coast Guard alone has a payroll of $26 million, you know, and the rest of the base is like $6 million. So there's lots of payroll dollars that come to the communities.
We've already lost a lot.
Because of the base. So we need to help them stay relevant, is really what it's all about. And on, and Dan Gallo was saying, with Open Cape, they're going to be able to provide the base with that broadband service that they don't have now, which will be very helpful to them in their homeland security projects. And they're going to move their cables, which now come out from the main gate at, where the Otis Rotary is, that's the main gate, they're going to move them around to the Falmouth gate, because they're, because there's, there's land right inside the base there, which they call the contonment area, you know, the 5,000 acres that are the lower end of the base, where businesses are beginning to think of building there, which will also help the business community, and also help, you know, bring more tax dollars into, onto the Cape.
The town of Littleton had done that with part of Fort Devon, so there is a model for that.
Yes, exactly, exactly right. So the Senate President was there at these meetings as well, and she's very supportive to this whole idea. So I think we need to be aware of what's happening at the base, and we also need to do whatever we can to support that, that operation remaining there. Which then brings me to...
Let me just talk to you right there and say that when Lance was commissioner, he was active on a committee on the base. We had some connection with it as...
Probably the Citizens Advisory Council.
Yeah.
Or the Senior Management Board, he may have been on the Senior Management Board.
I wonder if we should think about reconnecting with them, now that this other stuff is coming up.
Well, the town of Falmouth has a member on the Senior Management Board, a former selectman is on that board.
And you're in touch with him?
Oh, yeah, her, it's a her.
Well, I, you...
Yeah, so it's really important to just say, yes, I have a way to stay connected. Actually, we were able to get Maya the ability to use some of the Christmas tree area on the base for driver training, you know, for police and fire, for cruisers and fire department vehicles, so that they can come down and train all the people from the towns on the Cape, as well as Falmouth and a couple of towns on the other side of the canal. So, so that works very well.
Also, I don't, don't forget your thought, I just wanted to say that Sharon, Sharon, I don't know why I'm stuck on that name, Sharon Rooney over at the commission is on the Citizens Advisory with Mark Begley, because he oversees, he does the mediating between the environmental issues and the military. So she is part of that advisory, so if there's...
And Mark was there.
I'll tell, ask her to keep us abreast if there's something we should be aware of.
And, well, Mark Begley was there for the presentation the other night.
When you go over to the commission, perhaps you could tell Sharon of our interest in keeping her by that as well.
Yeah, yeah. We just want to stay in tune in what's going on there, because we don't want BRAC to come in and say, "We're closing down Otis." They have tried before, remember?
Yes, I remember.
And then the last was, the final meeting of the day, was on public-private partnerships, which was a symposium that the Senate President moderated. Well, we were all there, so we've all heard it. And that's something to really think about if, when we talk about water and wastewater, that maybe that that might be a mechanism for us going forward, to work with the towns on maybe the possibility of having public-private partnerships to move these infrastructure programs forward.
Do you remember that fellow that got up and was making, making a comment?
The ABCs of PPPs?
Mr. Torres.
That was one of the presenters. This was Shamir, you know, the person from the audience that was asking for some, you know, some...
Yes, the older gentleman that got up first.
The first questioner?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He sent me a copy.
With the Irish brog?
Whatever it was.
Shamir.
Well, he had a brog, I can tell you.
I know the Irish, I considered you one of the lost tribes, but I think he was Irish. But he did send me a copy of an economic development, which I think I have here, that I was going to share, you know, let's see.
Well, why don't you forward that to me, then I'll pass it along.
Yeah, that would be good.
Right, okay. I think that's sort of a...
Oh, it's after 2:00.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should move on to the budget, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take so much time, but...
But before we, before we leave that completely, I think that you're going to be going to the Economic Development Council tomorrow, and...
No, I'm not going to be able to go tomorrow.
Well, actually, I was going to bring that up. You're bringing up this issue about the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to bring that up too, because, yeah.
Yeah.
The EDC, that's the next thing on my list.
Oops. So, yeah, Bill, just forward this to me, there was, you know, a bit of an issue, I guess from Dave Willard.
Yes.
And I don't think it's an issue, the issue has to do with kind of the whole, how much we're spending on the rest area. I don't see it as an issue, because we haven't gotten any money from anyone else, so in order to open it, we're going to have to do what we said in the budget, which was the $35,000. But I think what Dave is asking, and Pat, maybe you can confirm this, is I circled the little future grant rounds, round two, the $150,000, if you guys would authorize that expenditure.
Well, here's what I think they're looking for, is they, what they really need, I think, is a, like a monthly report of what the balance is in this account.
Oh, we, we know what it is, is...
Yeah, but they don't know what it is.
Yeah, they do. Frankly, for two reasons, and you can see them right there, there's some disagreement.
Oh, I see, so you see...
Both of them have to do, one of them has to do with the EDC's budget in a previous fiscal year, 2010, which was approved, but there was some, someone doesn't think it was approved, and it was. And then the biggest, the next biggest discrepancy is on the rest area, where we think $35,000 will be spent, and they think only 16. But I sent the bill earlier, if the $16,000 number is the one you approve, then the rest area won't open in May, because we don't have any money to open it, because we haven't gotten money from anywhere else, so. There was an assumption made that there was going to be some money forthcoming from other sources, hasn't happened yet. Now, May, but hasn't happened yet, so.
Where, I don't see the 16, where's that?
I see on the rest area, where the 19.
Oh, okay.
So she's, so we put in this much, I think they must have thought, in their minds, that's what they were putting in.
Well, that's what they voted. They actually voted 16, that was all they were going to contribute, because they didn't really believe that they should be the sole financier of the rest area.
Well, nobody believes that, right? We all, we all believe that we shouldn't be the sole one, however, I haven't gotten a check from anyone else who, I also believe that, I guess, at this point.
My recollection is that we asked for money, we got $100 from all of them.
No, we didn't get any of that.
We got $2,000 from the Cape Cod Chamber.
Well, that was a year, that was, that was two years ago.
That was two years ago?
Yeah.
But I don't believe that anybody else came up with any money.
No, nobody else came up with any money.
So, it was your pleasure. What's your pleasure?
What, no, I think, my thought though was, what happens with them is, they never, they, they, meaning the EDC, when they want to plan grants, they want to say, say April is a grant period.
And I think tomorrow they want to, they make an announcement.
They do?
Yeah, that's what
Of what?
They want to make an announcement that they have
Oh, how much funds are available for grant purposes.
That's what I think this is all about, right. So I
They didn't get authorized.
Let me, let me just go over, so you have this in front of you, now you see a total available amount going into FY11, you see a number. You've approved the 350, you've approved the 150 for the first round, you've approved the 40 for marketing, you've approved the 35, 476 in the rest area. See, the only two pieces that I know that we haven't approved so far are the 150 and the 35 for the contractual support. I don't have any discrepancy with those numbers, or right on line with those numbers.
And those were pre-authorized in the original budget allocation
Right.
We don't have a pre-authorized, original budget allocation. We're doing things differently now. So those, I would recommend to you that you approve those amounts. Because I, we had a call in today to confirm that that's what he's looking for, because it wasn't clear.
What, are they, they're looking for the 150 and the 35?
Far as I know
No, they're looking for a commitment from us as to what we're authorizing at this time.
Isn't that what you just said?
Yeah, that's what I just said. For the 150 for the grants expended.
I think that's what they're looking for, for the round two of the grants.
Excuse me, what if we vote and that's not what he's looking for? Have we just
And I don't know what he's looking for.
Well, you can come back and reconsider it.
I would assume that's what he's looking for, because that's what we haven't approved so far.
But if we vote the 35, are we voting the 35 out of the license plate money?
Yeah, this is all license plate money.
And so what we're doing is disregarding their recommendation of vote and going over them?
No, I think that is their recommendation.
I think the sense of the question that I understood from, as I understood this, was that they wanted to have a assurance of how much money they had available.
So they just want to know what it is?
Yeah.
Well, they've seen this piece of paper several times. So if they're looking for an assurance about what they have available, they've seen this. And I don't know what else to do for them.
Well, I was going to go to the meeting tomorrow night. I missed the last one, and I regret it, so.
Well, what is the difference, what is this 50,000, 51,340?
Two years ago, 2010, there was still money. In fact, if you recall, the Assembly funded fully the EDC's budget, once we, when we had a budget still for the EDC, out of the license plate account. The EDC didn't agree with that, but it didn't matter, that's what the budget said. So that's where that 51,340 got charged to the license plate account, because that's paid for the EDC's budget at that time.
And now there is no budget.
Salary entrench, now there is no budget, but that was two years ago, so that came out of there. They don't agree with that. So that's fine, they don't agree with it, but it's a fact.
The Assembly doesn't agree with that?
No, the EDC doesn't agree with that. But that's fact, not opinion. And then they don't agree on the license, the rest area piece. But I, what I'm saying to you is if you go with EDC's $16,000 number, then the rest area won't open in May, because there will be no money to pay for it, at least right now.
Because on the county side, we don't have 16,000 to make up the difference.
No, we, right, we've said in the 2011 budget that we're going to spend $35,476 on the license, from the license plate, on the rest area. I know there was discussions about others ponying up some money, but it hasn't happened
Do we have any anticipation that it works? What is our reasonable probability that that might happen, based upon what we know right now, on a scale of zero to five?
Zero to 5%? Well, you're in the neighborhood, that's for sure.
Zero to 100, I would say that they'd be less than, it'd be a negative number.
Probably a thousand dollars.
I haven't heard
I would, I would guess, Bill. All I know is, I know how much I got in the bank right now.
The only thing I've heard from the LC3 people is that they want to know what part of the license plate money they can access.
I know a long time ago, we met with the EDC, and their proposal was, you know, 50/50, but that's never come to fruition. And in the 2012 budget, I'm not assuming it still comes to fruition.
So what's needed now with a, is a, I guess, approval?
This is what, I'm recommending that you approve the future grant rounds for $150,000 contractual support amount for $3,500. That's what I'm
$3,500, $3,500.
$3,500, right here in this piece of paper.
I will
Because those are the pieces that have not been funded so far.
I move that we appropriate that money for them.
And
The 150 and the 350.
The 3,500.
I'll second that.
And if, and if we're not understanding it right
Then we'll come back and straighten it out.
I really think that we
They just want to know.
I, I don't know, I think we have to think about maintaining this whole rest area, which is a real big issue. But it also doesn't make sense to me that we should use all the license plate money to maintain the rest area. You know, I just don't think so. I think either we, either we have to pony up some money to help support it, or we just say to the state, you know what, we can't do this anymore. We're using economic development funds from the license plate money to do this. And it's not a good use of funds.
That it was a state responsibility.
Well, I would, I would argue the state doesn't care.
I know the state doesn't care.
It's not their problem, you know what I mean? They've shut rest areas across the state left and right. That's not a problem they see as an issue, I guess.
Now, the initial support of this was on an emergency basis, because the state had closed it, and the Yama Chamber of Commerce had asked us to help keep it open.
I wouldn't characterize it as an emergency bill, I think, previous boards back in 97, made the decision, we're going to use some license plate money to fund the rest area, period, end of sentence. That's my recollection.
However, we're not the only ones that receive license plate money. We're not the only ones that are working to get economic development. I understand the chamber has their issues as well, but so do we. And since the chambers are sort of the umbrella, if it was all working right over the other local chambers, and if the local chambers can't support this by $1,000 a chamber, then maybe we should go into some sort of discussion with the Cape Cod Chamber and say, we're doing this with our half, just like we shared the profit from that one time
Coastal capital.
Coastal capital with them.
Yeah.
And that was to the tune of $150,000, if I remember, or $100,000. So I think that it's very appropriate for us to approach the chamber and say, we will bear some of this, but we can't bear the whole thing.
Do you, how do you suggest
We did, we just sent out a letter to that, in fact, I remember a couple of weeks ago. Yeah.
Did Mr. Zammer?
Not yet, no.
Well, do we have to vote on this today? Do we have to vote on this today?
Because they want to make that announcement.
Thank you. That was the emergency email that Bill got.
Because they won't meet again for another month.
Right.
Yeah, I have no, I have no problem with appropriating this this 150 and the 3,500, we can still have a discussion
Yeah.
With the chamber.
About the chamber, yes.
And if we are successful in getting some money from them, we can put it back into our license plate.
That's right. The rest area is not a critical issue today, because we won't open until the week before Memorial Day. That's the first weekend it gets opened.
So we can go to the Cape Cod Chamber.
Right.
In fact, you have a letter in
In the queue.
In the pipeline, yeah.
Going to them.
So we'll follow that.
And what, did we indicate in there that we wanted to meet with them on it?
No, I think we said that, yes, we'd be happy to meet with them, we usually do.
So I think we should follow that over the phone call.
I think that, since you're the EDC person, you might want to call Bill Zammer, and when you, yeah, I suggested, I'm sorry, but
I think that's a good idea.
I'll call both of them.
Sheila, I think that's a terrific
We have a call in to, we have a call in to Dave Willard, we'll mention to Dave too.
Right, and, but I still, so to go back to the original motion, I'll, that we approved that, the amount of money that's available so that they can go forward with their grants.
Is there any further discussion on the motion?
And we'll go forward with the chamber.
Right.
That's a separate issue, but on the motion itself, is there any further discussion?
No.
In the hearing, no further discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you very much.
And if that's not the case, we'll
And you will advise Dave to look at the matter.
Yep, that's good, I think that's
Now, getting back to the other
I just wanted to say, before we leave it, tomorrow, I have the dedication of the Clark Center, tomorrow at 5:00, and the Cancer Center.
Okay, so I'm going to, I was going to attend the meeting anyway, so I'll be there if they have
Is that in Falmouth?
Yeah, and I really need to be there for that, so if you can go to the EDC.
For some reason, I thought that was in Hyannis.
No, it's in Falmouth.
Yeah, I remember getting the other thing, that's, well, okay. We're running behind on budget discussion.
It's not really, that was part of the budget, that was a budget discussion, it's my budget for this year. But, okay, now I have, kind of, just this, you've seen this piece of paper before, I just modified it based on what was in.
Is this changed to what you thought was in?
What was out. Yeah, a little bit, because as you know, in the 2012 proposed budget, we didn't fund any of the new positions that were requested, so that's reflected here. Everything else on this page was funded at the level that you see indicated here, and I'll just go over that stuff in summary. We did include $25,000 in the Commissioner's budget for professional technical services for needs that come up. Sheila has mentioned a couple of ideas on what that might be used for. So that's in there. We funded the Arts Foundation for $35,000, that's an increase from Roster for $30,000. We did provide information technology with a number of the requests that they asked for, especially on the capital side, there's some significant money there, I think that adds up to $440 or so, if I'm not mistaken, pretty close to that number. But we also included this, the funding for their summer interns, the overtime and some staff training that they, that they asked for. On cooperative extension, we provided one of the two new vehicles that they asked for along with the new skip for the marine program. On facilities, there's mostly some increases on the capital side for especially some new window replacements up on the former jail and house of correction. Also some paving and the water main lines up on, associated with that building and the gym building as well. And then some fire alarms in both, in the registry, the Second District Court, and the House of Correction. On health and environment, we included the new pickup truck that they've asked for, as well as this, under the capital budget, that emergent contaminants lab equipment that they asked for, the testing device. And there are human services, we did include some additional professional technical services money that Beth had asked for, so she has some ability to do special projects and things. We increased the coordinators' contractual funding level from $28,800 to $35,000 for the Human Rights Commission. And also the Human Rights Commission, we provided them $8,300 in additional funding for supplies and materials, and there's a bit of a special projects fund in there, I think we funded that at $3,000 or so. Before it was zero, we really, they didn't really have any money, and that was kind of a burden on Beth, because they, you know, if they needed pencils or something, of course, that's where they went, so. So we gave them at least some rudimentary funding for supplies and materials and that kind of thing. And two pieces that are funded in the budget, Cape Cod Commission and the Water Collaborate are $100,000 in terms of the legal defense fund, so to speak. And then those other two positions, they are the two things I noted on the bottom, especially the energy staff has significantly increased, but that's funded out of the energy fund, you know, that's grown and leaps and bounds, and now we really have, we're from a $5 million energy efficiency budget to really a $20 million energy efficiency budget, so they've increased the staff at the Cape Cod Company for that, so. So basically, you've got about a $25 million budget.
Did you cover the Assembly delegates for position reduction, did you cover that?
Yes, we did cover that, though. So we basically have a $25 million budget, and that is an increase of about 7.2%. The only change from what you saw last week, because I met with Ron Bergstrom and John Omen, they hadn't quite finished the Assembly budget, because we were in transition with Janice O'Connell, the new clerk over there. So they sat down, I had prepared a rudimentary budget for them. They did add 2,000, so your budget from what you saw last week wound up by 2,000 for some, they wanted some computer equipment in case they need some computer equipment over there. They weren't quite sure what Janice's needs might be, so I put that in. So that was it.
Do you have any questions?
No.
So that's the number I'll prepare for us to bring over on the 16th.
Did you have any questions, Pat? I have two questions. One is, what is the new head count?
I don't know off the top of my head, Bill, actually, I think it's lower, because we're, there's a number of positions that have been changed, so I think it's actually lower. It was 179, I think, in the 2011 budget, I think it's actually lower.
And the other one was, in looking at the percentages of increase in expenditures, I think I had spoken to you about carving out what the capital
We'll do that, I do a, as part of the transition, I do a variance report for the Assembly, and it goes over basically group by group in each department, tells where the, what the significant increases or decreases have been and why. So you'll see that.
Like this 124%, you saw the scary
Well, that's because of, that's on information technology, that's because we're actually spending quite a bit on the capital side of that.
And then the dread service of 21% human, human services, 44%
Dread services, all enterprise accounts, it's actually covered by revenue.
And like, in the water quality initiatives, are those mainly the reserve fund for the protections?
I think that's the most significant piece, yeah.
So anyway, if that could be part of that, I think that that would
Yeah, and I will, as soon as I do that, I'll pass that on to the three of you, you'll be, at least be able to see that before it gets transmitted over there.
So are we in good shape going forward, just sorry if it's wrong?
Yeah, I have one question on the, where are you, up on the top there in the first section, under departments? The Human Rights Commission coordinator, is that at one time an employee?
No, they asked this year, they'd be an employee.
Oh, they asked it, and that's why it's showing
That's why it's showing there. They originally asked for 52, and we gave 35 as a contractual. And it's been the contractual since the inception.
Last year, we did a letter, and then we made a presentation of the budget, where we explained where we were going.
Yeah, the letter's a requirement of the chart, it's why we drafted
I understand that, so I know that you do that, you send that to us and that sort of thing. And I think that that was a good thing, and I think it was well received, and it gave clarification as to our motivations about moving forward, we're positioning ourselves for the future, especially with IT and this equipment we need, and we have not been, we've been very lean on ourselves over the last couple, several years. So I'm just asking, are we going to do something like that again?
Yeah, actually, Ron asked me about that today, I talked to him, I said, it's coming over the 16th, and he said, did you bring a presentation? And I had to remember, and I think I did, so I'll revamp that, and I'll send it to you guys ahead of time. Yeah, so you'll see it.
So we'll see that before next week?
You'll see a draft, I don't know if it'll be before next week, before 16th, definitely.
Two more weeks.
Any other questions?
There's someone in our audience
Yeah, always good to see you.
Who was part of the team.
Are you visiting?
I am, I'm just
Always good to see you.
I have no questions.
Oh, okay, thank you.
No issue with the commission budget.
We always look for
We got plenty of money.
Well, we haven't asked the county to support our budget for a few years, so it's a good thing.
I hope there's a tinge of bitterness in that.
Probably relief.
They pay their share of retirement and health insurance, that's enough.
They sure do.
All right, well, with that, do you need a?
No, I don't need anything, that's a kind of update, so I think it's a good budget, I think we've done a good job kind of reviewing all the little pieces, because it's a tough, you know, you got a lot of, the county, the county is in a lot of different directions, and you kind of have to keep all those balls in the air juggling, and I think you guys did a good job with that. I think the departments will be happy, they get everything they want, but, you know, as Sheila says, it's been very tight the past few years, I think it's a little bit, loosening up a little bit going forward, so you have a little bit more in the way of resources to do what they need to do.
Well, let's see, are we back on reports? Do you have anything more to add?
No, I was just going to make a motion.
You know, actually, I just want to mention next meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I slipped over, okay, I did a radio program on OMR, which will be on Sunday the 6th, at 6 o'clock, on Cape Cod contact issues. Let's see, Friday, we all, Saturday, we all went to the, the Human Rights Commission, and I wanted to mention that the Human Rights Commission, I thought that Randy Hunt, in addition to giving the resolution from the House, also gave one to the group as a whole, and I thought that was, you know, that was very, very nice of him. On Monday, let's see, we had the MPO meeting, and we're, the MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding is, is out for hearing right now, and they've now added an additional section of the Cape, where they had three zones of representation besides the, besides the town of Vansville, they've now made four. So it makes a little bit more sense in terms of, let's say, the demographic character, they've now put Provincetown, Wellfleet, and Truro, and Eastham together, whereas before they, Eastham was part of Orleans and Harwich, and they put Harwich and Brewster together, and they made Dennis and Yama, and then the upper Cape with Sandwich and Mashpee and Palma, and then Vansville by itself. But the point is that it's a more representative breakdown of the, you know, of the character of the MPO, and they will be voting, passing it around to vote on it, so I think that that's something to look forward to, they're, want to make sure everybody's represented. We had, let's see, did you go to the Open Cape legislative thing?
Yes, we were.
And how was that?
That was excellent. I mean, it's really amazing what those guys have done, and female.
And one point that, that damn near, I thought that was really important, too, is of all of the grants that were funded by, by the feds for broadband, all around the country, that we are the most prompt, the most organized, and most further along than any of the other grant recipients on broadband issues.
And that goes to show you with four individuals who set their mind to something some years ago could do.
Yeah, it also might have to do with having a county infrastructure in place, in which to deal with this kind of broad regional issues, where a lot of places don't have that.
That is absolutely, that is absolutely a help to them, and they also knew how to identify the partners in that region.
Right.
Who knew how, you know, the tech council, they went to each person, and it's, it's a great success story.
So they've signed a lease agreement now with the county, and they've also let out the contract to, to begin hanging the fiber and doing the trenches.
And that's a great segue into, at the MMA meeting.
Well, I've got one minute left on the table.
Okay.
That should do it, that should just about do it.
All right, at the MMA meeting, there was, we had a presentation from Pam Clark, who was part of the administration finance. They are starting to put together a regional services funding mechanism, 9.6 million, but it's very loose, but they now have included county and regional planning agencies, and I sent an email to, to Hall, to ask him to get in touch with this woman, because I think that they, she would benefit from some of the, you know, some of the input that he could give her. So hopefully, that will actually move forward, because there's actually money that they're talking about that could be allocated. And counties and the, and the, you know, Cape Cod Commission could act as it, initially it was just a ground up, you know, two communities or three communities would, on their own, sort of decide to get together, and what I tried to point out to her was, that with the umbrella organization we have at the Cape Cod Commission, we have the ability to actually deliver that, and that's the main thing that we did with that yesterday, and let's see, we had the, let's see, one other thing, oh, I guess it's a rest of just stuff.
Motion to go into recess.